Called to order for our special meeting. We have items for discussion and action to take on this particular one. Mr. Superintendent, could you put forth your recommendation, please?
Are we doing them one at a time, Ms. Holly?
I think so.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. I recommend the board approve the charter application for Treasure Coast School for Autism to open August 2026 as submitted.
Okay. Now, before we take action on that, are there any in the audience that wish to speak to item 2.01, Charter for the Treasure Coast School for Autism? Seeing none, board members, we have a recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I still moved a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries five zero. Mr. Superintendent, item 2.02?
I recommend the board approve the charter application for Freedom Preparatory Academy to open August 2026 as submitted.
Okay, and again, are there any in the audience that wish to address this particular item? Seeing none, board members, we have a recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Not that I'm aware of.
No, okay. Any other items? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Again, motion carries five zero. And we now move to item 2.03. Mr. Superintendent?
Just one personnel action. I recommend the board approve the attached Personnel Action Item Report as presented.
Board members, we have a motion, a recommendation. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll, a second. Thank you, Dr. Mills. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. The special meeting is now adjourned, and we will open our work session meeting. If you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And our Kids at Hope pledge?
As an adult and treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talent, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children capable of success, no exceptions.
Thank you. You may be seated. Mr. Superintendent, I will turn it over to you.
Good morning, board members. Excited with some trepidation. We're only a couple of days away from the start of testing, and I wanted to go through a couple of copies that you have in front of you before we start our presentations this morning. First is a copy basically of summer important dates as we roll into the summer, and it's it looks just like this. At the top, it says important dates. So, we want to keep it keep it simple. But we've got a regular board meeting on the 14th, and then the 23rd and 24th, we have graduations, and those are all listed with their times. May 28th, there is no board workshop. And then, May 29th, we've got some of our other smaller alternative schools that have their graduation. And then, June 18th is important because it's combined. We will have the board workshop at 2:00 PM, and at that board workshop, it's basically the year in review. We'll review the goals, whether we've met those goals that we laid out last year. We should have most of our testing results in. I will tell the board it is going to be a different year. We were told by the Department of Education to anticipate school grades much later, possibly as late as early August. So, I just wanted you to be aware. We will have PM three or Progress Monitoring Three test scores in reading and math. We will have that, but I'm not sure by June 18th if we will have our social studies and science results yet. Those are due June 30th. So, we won't know that. Also, in June, I'll kind of lay out my proposed goals for the 24-25 school year. One of the presentations we have today is very relevant to that, and Dr. Summer is going to be outlining a pretty bold initiative with regards to student acceleration. And student acceleration in the past has really been, starting in seventh and eighth grade, with algebra. We're moving that up into third grade and identifying students with acceleration opportunities in elementary school, and Dr. Summer's going to lay that out. And as we expand that idea, that is probably going to be one of my goals for next year because it's providing opportunity and access for all children and to accelerated pathways, which is a priority of mine, and it's a philosophy that I've carried with me my entire career. So, as we segue into July, at the July regular board meeting, that is my evaluation, just you know, just remind our board members what to anticipate. And then, July 18th, we have our summer high school graduation, and then a board workshop on the 23rd. And then, two important dates to maybe get on your calendars, the July 25th Leadership Kickoff, and that is with our principals and APs and directors, and that will be at LPA this year. We're doing it a little bit differently in the past. It's been at Central or Treasure Coast, but we're going to be doing it at Lincoln Park Academy. And lastly, we will be doing a live teacher kickoff that we did very similar two years ago. It will be a live event, and we will be piping in that to all of our school centers with their faculties, and that will be 40 to 45 minutes of basically kicking off the year. And just wanted to make sure you have that on your calendars now. So, the presentations that we have are the following today. We'll have we'll hear from the Boys and Girls Club. I'm very excited to welcome them. They are a big partner of ours in our schools, and I want to make sure the board understands how engaged and how involved the Boys and Girls Club is with with our schools and our students because they do serve a number of schools, and they serve so many important things in our community that I wanted to highlight that today. The second thing is Michelle Thomas is going to be providing. We did have an audit and an audit finding, and she's going to report out a corrective action. And the third presentation is going to be Dr. Summer with updates on our discipline, attendance, and then he's going to be kind of taking a deep dive into this acceleration. And lastly, Dr. Wild will be doing a CTE overview. I anticipate we'll have a record-breaking year in career and technical education with the number of completers and the number of industry certifications that we'll be giving out. If you were to stop the year right now, we already are more successful than we were last year, and our students haven't even tested yet with the number of passing scores that we have. It's just unbelievable what our Career and Technical Education Department, led by Rod Natta and Alicia Sights, have done a really remarkable job. I'd like to orient you real quick because this is important if you're planning on visiting any schools. This is a matrix of our testing dates. So, every day moving forward, basically, we start testing on Wednesday, the 1st of May, and you can see what grades are being tested and what they're testing in. And there are breaks, you know, in testing throughout the next month, but I would ask you, if you are going to visit a school, please try to visit on a non-testing day because we're going to be really tied up from an administrative standpoint to make sure that testing runs seamlessly. So, with that being said, I'd invite Will up to the podium, and good morning.
Good morning. First, I want to make sure I do this right. Testing myself here, testing my skills. All right, great. Good morning, Madam Chair, board members, and thank you for having us, Dr. Prince, this morning. First and foremost, I want to thank you all for more than 20 years of serving St. Lucie Public Schools. Today with me, I have some of my team members and board members here to help me go through this presentation. Boys and Girls Clubs, we're excited to have more than 240 staff members with the Boys and Girls Clubs. Twenty-seven to 32 of those of the staff are teachers, certified teachers from St. Lucie Public Schools, and we have done so over the last several years, and it's been remarkable to have some of your fine teachers work with us at St. at our Boys and Girls Clubs. I wanted to share some of our leadership, and they never give me a clicker because I always mess it up. Well, no slide. But in any case, we have more than 25 board members, and we have a list of folks throughout our community that are from our community that are working at Boys and Girls Clubs to make sure that we're not only providing a safe environment, but that our kids are getting the well-needed learnings that they need to in St. Lucie County. As I work through this this slide, I want to talk about the impact that we are having in St. Lucie County. Boys and Girls Clubs of St. Lucie spends, on average, about 2,400 hours with our members, and not all of it's instructional. Some of it is working with relationships, but we spend a great deal of time with our members. The estimated 24 hours hours that we spend are not just in the club setting. It's also in our mobile club where we spend more than 3,000 where we serve more than 3,000 kids this past year. We also provide other programs, such as our A-plus attendance, where we are serving 16 of your schools, and that's been an amazing partnership for many, many years. We also, which is one of my favorite things because I know we talked about this, we are currently operating four 21st Century locations, which exist in at Mariposa. We have one at our Garden Terrace location where we serve several schools, and two of my favorite clubs is the one that we have at Treasure Coast High School and the other one at Fort Pierce Westwood High School, where both locations are packed with teenagers every single day. Of those ones that are at Garden Terrace location, we do service Chester A. Moore and Lawwood Elementary School. We also ensure that every one of our kids, with the help of St. Lucie Public Schools, get a meal. And I know that in this job that I've been in for eight and a half years, one of the issues that we all face is kids going home without a meal. And so, with the help of St. Lucie Public Schools, every one of our locations, 25 locations, our kids get a meal for dinner. And and so, for the year, we serve more than 650,000 meals. We also work with our workforce readiness program, which is in many of our clubs, and I'm happy to announce that our kids are giving back 25,000 hours over this last year, as well as the kids have earned more than $250,000 in stipends, which each of them have to have some type of job as they work through work in our clubs. Now, I just want to share with you, I'm not used to doing two things at one time here, so I'm going to catch myself up. So, by the numbers, along with good character and citizenship, our vision is that every member is living a healthy lifestyle, is on track for graduation from high school with a plan for their future. To ensure that, we equip them with the tools that they need to be successful, we place heavy emphasis on data collection and managing tangible outcomes. Last year, we saw 82% of our middle and high school club members maintain or increase a GPA. Ninety-three percent of our club teens are on track or on accelerated track for science, language, arts, and 97% of our members are on track to graduate high school. We collect this data through annual surveys, monitoring our members' report cards, utilizing data collected through partners such as Children's Services Council and other in-club collection methods. I want to share a few of our programs. In addition to our academic success, our programs are broken into five additional core program areas. Characters and Leadership Development, Health and Life Skills, Sports and Recreation, Arts, and Workforce Readiness. We believe that when our community, families, and kids are paired with our world-class clubs, life-enriching programs, and workforce readiness, we can achieve academic success, healthy lifestyles and good character and citizenship, and as part of our vision for Boys and Girls Clubs. Aligning our goals with St. Lucie Public Schools. It is critical to the success of our programs and of our members that we share aligned goals with St. Lucie Public Schools. Our goal is to come alongside our school and bolster the learning through hands-on, unique experiences that students wouldn't otherwise receive. We are very happy to align with St. Lucie Public Schools and that we design our program lessons plans to not only be fun and engaging, but also meet criteria that is expected in classrooms. Some of these goals include increased achievement in science, provide safe places for our students to learn, recover from learning loss experience due to the pandemic, ensuring our staff are certified, and certified teachers have a thorough understanding of established statewide learning standards. And I want to stop there for a second. We realized a couple of years ago that we needed additional help in that area, and that's why we brought on Renee Mato as our Senior Director of Education, who could work with all of our teachers, and she has done an absolutely wonderful job with us. We want to make sure that we're improving math scores, combat the summer learning slides, and allow our members' interest to drive and learn through Student Senate Learning and Programs. We have found that because Boys and Girls Clubs of St. Lucie County and St. Lucie Public Schools share these students, we, and I will tell you this, I met Dr. Perry more than nine years ago, and that was the first thing that he said to me. He was, "These are your kids, and they're our kids, and that we need to make sure that we're giving the kids exactly what they need, whether it's before school, during school, or after school." We have dedicated time and resources and will continue to do so to ensure that our clubs have a deep understanding of what is being taught in the classrooms, what expectations are being set for our students, and the areas in which most growth is needed. It is our mission to enable young people to reach their full potential, and we feel that the best way to do it is to work together in the school system. Couple Program Spotlights. You should have received some printed materials that go into details of some of our unique programs that help us meet some of those outlined objectives and goals. These special programs include STEM projects, our Voices Program, which allows for in-club advocates to provide our club members with additional mentorship when needed. Just to elaborate on the Voices Program, this was a program that was started just over a year and a half ago, and it was for kids that needed just a little bit more than the club experience. A lot of kids were suffering from depression and some other things from home, from violence and some other things that they have seen, and we have taken it to another level with some good partners to make sure that we're providing our kids the needed advocates for them. And so, that has worked great. Right now, we have nine advocates that are working with our young people that need the additional assistance. As I stated earlier, one of some of our spotlighted spotlighted programs includes our mobile unit, which goes out a couple of days a week. It goes out on the weekends, as well during the summer, where they have five days a week. And that has proven to really help the community on those parents that may not want their kids to go indoors into a club setting. This allows us to go to parks throughout the community, and parents to spend time with their kids. While you can read the details of each of these programs in the printed materials, I also want to take a moment to highlight our Youth of the Year Program. As you may know, we have a state Youth of the Year winner for the club year '22 and '23. Her name was Mia Morrison, and she attended Lincoln Park Academy. Today, Mia studies aerospace engineering at Emory Riddle and has gotten to experience some amazing things through this program. She has been a keynote speaker at national conferences, spoken at events for companies such as NASCAR and Puma and so many other big companies. This year, our Youth of the Year winner, Enrique, will be follow will be following Mia's footsteps and competing at the state Youth of the Year competition, which is this Thursday. Enrique Enrique has a passion for learning and teaching and was even guaranteed a teaching job through St. Lucie Public Schools, a Promise is a Promise program, and he is only in 10th grade. So, thank you for that, Dr. Prince. That was a big deal. I don't think nobody guaranteed me a job until I started working for Boys and Girls And so, just a little bit about Enrique. We heard his speech again last night, and it really is a tribute to the work that you all do at here at St. Lucie Public Schools. His Boys and Girls Clubs comes alongside you, and we have time to really pour into the kids at a different level, but what you all do is amazing, and you see it in our kids. Mia Morrison, while she did win State Youth of the Year, she wasn't an anomaly for St. Lucie County. We have countless kids that are doing some remarkable things. When we look at another program that we have, that's our A-plus attendance. Working towards student success exceeds our academic programs and even our clubs. We are taking it one step further by providing a Children's Services Council-funded A-plus Attendance program. This particular program, our Attendance advocates work with 15 schools and counting to coordinate services with school staff and families that experience five or more unexcused absences in a 30-day period. By utilizing and analyzing CSC's data, we understand the chronic absenteeism has a direct correlation to a decline in a student score, especially in reading. According to CSC's data, kindergarteners who miss 10% of school days have lower academic performance when they reach first grade. And among children from low lower-income families who lack the resources to make up lost time, chronic absenteeism in kindergarten translate into lower fifth-grade achievements. I know there's a lot of data out there, right? There's a lot of data about third grade, but the bottom line for Boys and Girls Clubs is to make sure that we're helping to get those kids back in school. When they're in the clubs, we're making sure they're in the clubs and really sharing with them the importance of being in school, as well as the parents. The ripple effect is what we aim to solve. Our Attendance advocates provide personalized assistance to families and resources to help and overcome their individual circumstances. One of the things that we recognize is that every kid that doesn't show up to school, it's not because they're not smart. Some show up because they need a haircut, or they they need a way to school, or they don't want to go through that. They don't want to go through that neighborhood, or they have bad teeth. There are so many obstacles that many of our kids have, and we try to identify those at the Boys and Girls Clubs, and we work with the schools, the school district and their teachers to to give them that information. As I mentioned earlier, we talked about our 21st Century Clubs at Treasure Coast High School, Fort Pierce Westwood, Mariposa. Those relationships that we are having with those students, I know are having a significant output for our kids, and we want to continue those relationships. These sites keep learning standards at the forefront of all programming. Some kids are really just hands-on, and I'm just talking from a parent perspective. Some kids need to be able to see it and touch it, and so, and that's what we're doing at the Boys and Girls Clubs, is giving them an opportunity to take what they're learning in the classroom and applying it to everyday use. And then, it it seems to work for many of our students and many of your students who are the same students. I want to also talk about something that's very important and dear to me, and that's our professional development. We make sure that every staff member that works for us is getting professional development training. All of our senior leaders are getting professional development training so that we can teach our staff and that we can follow the rules of St. Lucie Public Schools. One of the things that I'm very happy about you all is safety, and Boys and Girls Clubs at the local level and national level are really about safety at every level of a kid's life, and so, we continue to talk with your teams about how do we make our kids safer at your schools. I wanted to share with you some of the schools that we are serving, and many of these schools, we've been in contact with you for more than 20 years, and we continue to look at how can we continue to build on this partnership and be in more of your schools. Many of our kids, when they leave leave your schools, they end up at maybe other after-school programs, which are great. I'm not taking away from any after-school program, but I can tell you that the Boys and Girls Clubs are going to be in a safe environment and learning environment, and we would love to continue this partnership and be in more of your after-school programs because we see it as a benefit for both the school, Boys and Girls Clubs, and ultimately our children. Our neighborhood clubs is what Boys and Girls Clubs was built on, and the reason that was because we wanted every kid to have an opportunity that they could actually walk to their club and not necessarily take a bus to their club. And the the location that we have here are strategically placed in each of these neighborhoods that our kids live, our most vulnerable kids live in these neighborhoods. And so, we see the growth throughout the summer and throughout the school year where these kids need a safe place to go, where they can get there freely. And so, at each of these locations, we have as many as 100 kids. I will tell you, our clubs at our Percy Peak Gym, which is all of our teenagers, these are teens that otherwise would be out on the street and may not be coming to school. So, I really want to think about how we can enhance what we're doing at our Percy Peak Teen Center because it's important in terms of making sure these kids have an opportunity, all of these kids, no matter their background, to be able to get that education that they need. A couple of the other locations is our Ken Pruitt Unit, which is off Leonard Road. That particular unit services mostly our Mariposa and some other neighboring schools, but it's been a mainstay for many, many years, and our kids and our parents can appreciate having that in their neighborhood. And as I go down the list, we have our Chuck Hill Unit, which is also a mainstay, and I believe council member, school board member, you were a big part of us getting a Chuck Hill Club. Also, our Westside, one of our newest clubs. Westside's been around just about three years, and we're serving tons and tons of kids. We expect to serve 300 to 350 kids just at that location this summer. And Infinity, the same, it's in Fort Pierce, as well as Garden Terrace is in Fort Pierce. But every location here that is in a neighborhood, it's in a neighborhood that needs a club, and if we could do quadruple this amount, it would really help both the schools and Boys and Girls Clubs and the kids that we serve. In closing, I want to thank you all for having me today, and I'll open it up for questions. Yes.
Why can't you quadruple the neighborhood clubs? What's stopping you?
That's a really good question, but like most things, because it has to do with, you know, funding.
Money.
Funding. I mean, at our neighborhood clubs, those families, during the school year, they pay $30 registration fee, and those are specific to families that cannot afford to have their kids in an after-school program. And those are specific to families that cannot afford to have their kids in an after-school program. And as you know, childcare is very expensive. I know that we are working on some other opportunities for our younger babies because it's just too expensive and parents can't go to work or can't get the job that they really can can receive out there just because of childcare. But that allows our kids to go to those clubs at thirty dollars for the entire year, for an entire year, yes. And then, in the summer, it's a nominal fee as well. We always offer scholarships. So, if a parent cannot pay for the kids, then we will offer a scholarship to reduce the cost or zero cost.
On first-serve basis or is there a limit to the amount of scholarships for these clubs right now?
We don't turn any kid away for the inability to pay. So, it's not on the first-come, first-serve, but if a parent cannot pay it, we will make sure that their kid's in our clubs.
Okay. So, if if we were in a perfect world, where, what area would you want to put another club? What areas do you have in here?
That's like a loaded question.
I know, right? Okay, never mind.
I mean, I'll answer it. I'll answer it, but it's a loaded question. If if this was a perfect world, I would put at least another club in each area of where we serve currently. And in some of our neighborhoods, our kids don't have ten, fifteen thousand square foot of space. It's usually five to seven, seventy-five hundred square foot of space. And if we had the opportunity to get our kids in bigger spaces where they had gym activities, they had places where they can do our lifestyle training, passport demand training, girls' training, I mean, that's what our kids really need in our neighborhoods, especially undeserved areas.
Yes, yes. Okay, something to think about. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
If I can, I just want to, how long have you been our CEO with the Boys and? I know you've been with us a long time on the board, but as a CEO?
I've been CEO, Jack, for eight and a half years.
We started thirty years ago very briefly and it wasn't easy. I think we had six or eight board members and we struggled to pay our bills. If it wasn't for the Children's Services Council, I don't think we'd be here. And we bought, Norman Penner came along, as you remember, a year before you. And within ten years, within ten years, we were the fastest-growing Boys and Girls Club in the United States of America. And you came along, you had some big shoes to fill. Norman was incredible. I mean, to say in ten years to take us to that level. And you, sir, have not only filled those shoes, but you have taken us to a whole new level. And I applaud you and I hope you stay for, you can stay as long as you want. You're doing a great, you're doing a great job. I won't stop because it may be the last time I ever get in public to 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 honor you like this. You've done a fabulous job and your board, Mr. Perry, very proud of Mr. Perry. Sir, there he is.
Well, Jack, if I could just just tell you something, this is very important. I think that the community should hear this too. It takes partnerships and we're only as good as we're allowed to be. And if it wasn't for relationships that I have with Dr. Prince to some innovative ways of doing things and working with Dr. Perry, who is our, actually is our board chair, started this year, there are a lot of things that we couldn't do. So, we at the Boys and Girls Club really appreciate our partnership and it is a national model. I I will admit that we are a national model on a lot of fronts. I have an amazing group of people who work with us and just do a really good job. And we have many of your teachers who work with us in the after-school space and been with us the entire time I have been there. And I see the diligence that they put into wanting the kids to learn. The difference between us is that our programs are more from an enriching standpoint, right? Where it's more hands-on, it's they're touching the product. And it makes a difference because then they can put two to two together, right? Two plus two is four, but if I show you four cards, let me show you how to do this. Or I give you a a problem to solve. We we want to continue that partnership. We bring people on like Renee Mato, as I said earlier, to help us get some of those things accomplished because she speaks the language.
Having said that, once again, I'm proud of you and we're very fortunate to have you. And I take that because we don't have any money for a raise for you this year, so just live with that, buddy.
Thank you, Jack.
Mr. Armstead, I'd like to say that I like that idea of the hands-on. I think that is very hands-on. I I think that it works for, it does work for everybody, but some of our kids need it and that you're doing it, I think it enhances their education so much. So, thank you. Whoever started that or, you know, I think that's a good idea.
I'm going to close, I know the superintendent will be like, well, you need to get off my stage.
I know, right?
But but listen, it's it's it is the hands-on, but the other big piece is relationships, right? No matter where you go today, you know, we need the education, but a child can't learn in an unrelated area. You have to have relationship. And if we're building relationships with kids, they're going to learn. When I get a chance to walk through Saint Lucy Public Schools, kids are happy, right? That means that their teachers are caring about what's going on. That means their principals are caring. And they get the same love at the Boys and Girls Clubs. We we really circle around each kid as an individual and make sure that whatever leadership style or whatever they're going to do in their life, that we're giving that to them and allowing them to do it.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Before you step off, the old saying, it takes a village to raise a child, is what I'm hearing you say in relationships. How it takes all of us together to really make an impact. I'm thinking about the parent aspect. What do you have in place, if you have anything at this point? Because you you certainly have allowed and been a part of a tremendous growth with Boys and Girls Club. But what do you, do you have anything in place where volunteers, parents are encouraged to volunteer within the club? As well as, you caught my interest when you said you have mentors now that go into the neighborhood and into the houses and talk with parents. Tell us a little bit more about that before you step down, please.
So, when I talk about our advocates and our mentors, first of all, all of our members are Level Two background check, right? So, we make sure that that's first. Safety is number one. That's key. When it comes to the parents, again, it comes down to the relationships. Each of our club directors and their staff build relationships with the parents. That is primarily their job because we're not the parents. We just want to give them extra tools in their toolbox. And we find that the more we engage the parents, even if it's not good, the parents tend to trust us more. And so, I'm happy to say, one of our recent activities, we took a group of kids to Guatemala. And what a fun, exciting trip to take kids to go work in another country. But the one thing that my team and I decided that, along with our board of directors, was that we need to involve the parents. How cool is it that your parent gets to go on a trip with you and be a part of that entire experience? Many parents have never had a passport, but the child has a passport. So, how do we figure this thing out? Is no one, there's no one silver bullet for this thing, but we just got to keep trying new things. And the parents get excited, the kids get excited. And the love that you see between the parent and the child is is just, it's just unreal. And that's how we do it. We don't have any specific set of rules around that, but that we have to make sure that the parents are engaged and are part of everything that we do with their children and their teenagers.
I've found with my own work with children that Skyward is extremely important in the process of helping to monitor a child's growth academically, whether they're turning in their homework. And the parent has to get involved in that. I find that a lot of parents don't know how to maneuver around Skyward. And what we had to do was we had to go to the parent and help train them in Skyward at our location and then stay in close contact with the parent to make sure the parent is doing their part, as well as us doing our part. Because like you said, we we're not there just to take care of the child. But thank you so much. We're going to let you go because.
You don't have to let me go because I can stay all day.
It's okay, it's okay.
But I will tell you, since you brought that up, just really quick, it is important that we figure out that piece. That's a big, you know, if I had a wish, that would be a wish. And I know there's rules around things, but being being able to allow organizations like Boys and Girls Clubs to be a part of the data portion of the kid's life, you know? If we had an opportunity to be able to see what's going on with the kids, if the kids are missing assignments and some other things, it could make a difference. I know there's some legality around that, but those are things that I think as an organization, when you have an organization as strong as we are and the relationships that we have, that we should always, you know, always reconsider when the opportunity is there.
What we have is, we have every child's numbers. And so, we're able as an organization to go right into Skyward directly and see all of that like the parent would see it.
Okay.
Just to give you that little.
Thank you. You want me to move? Can I just say thanks to any principal that's in the audience? Thank you for all the work you do.
No, I will just want to let you know, I appreciate you. And this is great because the the whole purpose of you coming today was for you to share what you do because the Boys and Girls do so much for our kids. And I wanted to make sure the board, you know, understood the involvement and the the synergy that we have together because we are constantly working together. And once again, I want to thank you, I thank members of your board and also some of the members of the Boys and Girls Club staff that are here today because we really do appreciate your advocacy for kids.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so we are going to pivot to, so last month, we had, as part of our financial informational reports, we had the financial statements and basically our audit. And Michelle Thomas, our chief financial officer, is going to come up. Out of, out of, you know, fiscal transparency, we wanted to provide the board with, basically, we did have an audit finding, I will say, anytime you have an audit, you always have a lot of findings. That's just, that's what they do. They're there to find areas that you can strengthen and also some of your business practices. We want to make sure that they're they're tight. And one of the audit findings that we did have, we did have to have a corrective action. So, Michelle is going to explain what it is and exactly what we're doing about it. Michelle?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, School Board Members and Superintendent Dr. Prince. I'm here to present the audit overview for twenty-two, twenty-three. I provided hard copies to everyone. Due to the significant deficiency finding, Florida Statute Ten Ten Point Three Zero requires the corrective action plan to be presented during a public meeting. You can, you can see the finding on page seventy of the audit report. During the audit, the auditors identified a significant deficiency and noted that the district's year-end financial close process operates with insufficient detail review procedures over reconciliations resulting in adjustments to the financial statements. It's important to note that this finding is related to an internal process, does not identify any fraud. The finding is accompanied by recommendations from the auditors and by developing a corrective action plan that accommodates those recommendations, we are taking the necessary preventative measures to avoid potential fraud or material misstatements in the future. Our corrective action plan will be ongoing. We plan to make significant improvements by the year end, June thirty, twenty twenty-four. Most of those, most of the corrective action plan involves taking our manual processes and automating them. We will be utilizing the Skyward Accounts Receivable Module. We're also looking into the Skyward Insurance Tracking Module. We have implemented quarterly balance sheet review meetings with the finance team made up of all of the accounts for the specific funds and some leadership as well. We do also have a benefit liability review team that consists of members from risk, payroll, and AP. Focusing on the certain accounts that were presented in the finding, we are looking at the accounts receivable and the insurance tracking. These processes currently involve manual processes that we are seeking to automate. We have training set up right now with Skyward to implement the accounts receivable module. This will allow us to create customers in Skyward, create invoices, link payments directly to invoices. We can run aging reports that show past due invoices. All of that will allow us to reconcile more timely and more accurately, thus avoiding these reconciliation findings in the future. The insurance tracking module is currently a work-in-process. The benefit liability review team, ITS in Skyward, we are reviewing videos. We are working with Tammy Pinkston in IT. We're reviewing the functionality. Skyward's going to set up and provide us with a demonstration where we will be able to ask questions and then make a decision on whether that module will efficient, be efficient for us. So, that's currently in process right now. Our quarterly balance sheet review meetings, we had our first meeting held January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Our next meeting is scheduled for, what is that? Tomorrow. Our fund accountants will present reconciliations on receivables and payables for their respective funds. The benefit liability review team will present reconciliations on the benefit liabilities and also identify the progress that they are making with the insurance tracking module. Our reconciliations will show specific detail and information for the balances. And any errors that are identified will be corrected and posted to the general ledger prior to our next meeting. In closing, I just want you all to know that we are committed to this plan and I want to thank all of the members of my team who are here today supporting this plan. Any questions?
I'll make a comment. First of all, I want to thank Michelle Thomas, our chief financial officer. Does a great job with her team. You know, in in a nutshell, the audit finding is, you know, they, basically, they see a blind spot or an area, one of your business practices that are weak, and they ask us to address it, which Michelle is doing. And we'll make sure that the next time we have an audit, that they don't see that blind spot anymore. So, that's kind of it in a nutshell. I don't have any questions, Michelle, but we'll see if any board members do.
Guess we're not using scratch paper anymore?
No. Scratch papers.
Gone.
Gone.
I got, I got one thing that I think would be nice to the general public to know about. You know, we are, our taxes, everybody pays taxes. And I think when you get your tax bill and, well, I'll get your proposed bill, we are probably the highest tax that you pay on a bill. And I just want the public to know that we are still a donor county. And I'll have you explain that, I think, three, four years ago, I don't know now, but all our money, all our taxes are sent to the government, to the governor. And we only get, we don't get a hundred percent back. I remember the last four years ago, we got eighty-seven percent back. Thirteen percent of the money that our taxpayer paid went to other counties. Is it still like that or has it changed? And can you explain the donor county?
I have to do some research on that, Mr. Kelly.
Okay. I'm pretty sure.
Jack, this is about an audit.
I know it's, I know it's about the audit, but it's something I need the general public, because people ask me all the time. I'm sure you guys get questions too, you know?
It's a great question, but I will have to do some research on that.
Okay. So, we'll talk about the the butts deficit at some other time. I want to know how we're going to correct that. John, you mentioned, what it was, twenty-one million and we only get eleven million, you know? How do you correct that, you know? Anyhow, that's about the audit, okay?
Actually, I do have a question. So, if I'm understanding correctly, it was the insurance that we had a blind spot, the tracking and the accounts receivable. That means that you weren't, people were owing money that they weren't paying or just, what does that mean?
There are, so, what that means is that we have a lot of those processes that are manual. And so, the reconciliations were just not being done in a timely manner and accommodating. We do not have areas where we are owed money and weren't collecting. It's a matter of moving things into specific funds and accounting for them in the appropriate funds as well. So, those are, if we don't make these corrections, they could lead to things like that, be not being able. be not being able to receive money that we are owed. But we are, we have received, been able to receive money that we are owed. This will allow us to track it easier and be able to provide reports that show that more clearly. It, it's very, the manual process does not allow us to run reports on, say, X, Y, Z, A, B, C companies that owe us. We'd have to do a lot of that manually. But I can assure you, we have reconciled these accounts. And since the audit, we have done reconciliations of these accounts and things are clean.
So in other words, this wasn't showing up in real time?
Real time, yes, and, and moving from fund to fund.
Okay.
Miss, funds, when I say fund to fund, I mean, general fund, capital fund, debt service fund. There were things that were not in line with those funds appropriately. But they were somewhere, they were just not in the correct funds, so.
Okay, all right.
The insurance, the insurance tracking as well, that is, that's more of an area of identifying and, and being able to reconcile the liabilities on those. But yeah, there, there is not money that's owed to us that we haven't received. It is a very manual process, but we do do a very good job at making sure that what we are owed is collected.
Okay. And, and the numbers that we have been getting are correct? It's just that they are, they are, they are in probably different eras at different times when, okay.
Yes, and that's why there is not that fraud. There is not that area of misstatement that, it's a significant deficiency because it's not corrected, it could lead to things like material misstatements. So that's why we're taking it very seriously and making those corrections now.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to bring up our Chief of Schools, Dr. Summer. So Dr. Summer's presentation is going to address some of the goals we have with, with attendance and student safety. But what I really want, would respectfully ask the board to really pay attention to is the accelerated, the acceleration of students to taking advanced coursework. This has been a philosophy that I've had when I got here in 2015, that we were going to advocate for kids. I, I experienced this job as superintendent and also, in what I thought was a really important job as principal, is an advocate for kids. I was one of seven kids, and I went through school anonymous and invisible and not being seen. And none of my family members went to college. In fact, some of my family members didn't finish high school. So whenever somebody finally saw me, and that was a teacher, and inspired me to take the SAT, to, to start thinking about college, it transformed my life. It changed my life in an instant. It really transformed everything for me. And that shaped who I am, as it, as it shaped who I was as a teacher, and then an administrator, and now as a superintendent. My parents weren't bad parents. I was, I was a high school athlete, I was a pretty good athlete actually at the time. Never came to a game, they never came to a conference. Bottom line is, they had to work. So if there's nobody advocating, and there, we have children like that in our system, that the parents are just trying to survive, and if their kids are going to school, who's going to advocate for those kids? Who is going to step forward and say, these kids have potential, we're going to identify them and we're going to push them? No child ever rises to low expectations. And, and I, that whole framework has carried me, and that's the philosophy we've had here, where we really started in algebra. So whenever you open a door for acceleration, you open a doorway to a first-generation college student. It happens usually in seventh or eighth grade when that kid gets put in algebra as a middle school student. They take that high school credit for the first time, and they are on a path now to have acceleration, accelerated coursework moving forward. So what Dr. Summer is going to be talking about is starting that much, much earlier. And we, we have that happening in our district now, but moving forward, it's going to be on steroids, and we're really going to do it system-wide. So Dr. Summer, I'm going to turn this over to you. The last thing I want to share is, I don't want to get lost in this document. This is a great document, it's a great resource. And I know many of you up here are involved in working with kids. You know, Dr. Mills, you have your organization, and Kenny, and Troy, I know that you do a lot of youth pastoring. But this is basically the, the university system admissions matrix. It's basically what you need, what scores you need to get into a college, what GPA you need. What, you know, it's all, a lot of information in one place. And I don't want to get bogged down in this because this is more a resource for you. But what it's going to show you is if we don't provide access to kids with Cambridge classes, AP, IB, you'll see they can't even get into a university without having extensive exposure in those classes. So I just wanted to share some of that and set the table for Craig as part of his presentation. Dr. Summer?
Thank you, sir. Good morning, Madam Chair, School Board, course to the audience. It's a pleasure to be here today with you. And I will start out pointing to our goals that I will be referring to today throughout the presentation, looking at the agenda, as Dr. Prince said. I will give a brief update on attendance, an update on discipline metrics, and then back to accelerating our students' learning. That will all align to goals. So going into the presentation, we see our first goal, number one, improving the daily attendance rate, to give you an update as to where we are, and have to really acknowledge the work led by our Student Services Executive Director of Student Services and Exceptional Student Education, Heather Roland, our Director of Student Services, Esther Rivera, and Amber Menarchik, our Administrator on Assignment. They lead a lot of this work, along with, of course, our school site staff, as well as our district staff. So thank you for the work that you do. So looking at how we are performing at this time of year, we're looking at quarters one to three. And the numbers that you see on the screen are comparing 2023, last school year, to 2024, quarter one to quarter three by level. So elementary, and if you look at the bottom on the left, the green, the difference is a .95% increase. K-8, middle school to 2.82%, high school 1.92%, which gives an overall of a 1.12% increase in attendance. Now quantifying that gives you about 500 students. So when we drill down into that, 500 students per day, additional students that were not attending last year are now attending this year. That's essentially a small school of students that last year were not attending. And that gives us about 3,000 hours of additional instruction per day this year versus last year.
Craig, I'm going to pause you, and I'm going to do this a few times today.
Yes, sir.
Because I, you know, I've been in this business 30, 32 years. And moving attendance overall for a school by half a percent is huge because it takes really some relentlessness. And us improving as a district over a percent, 500 students coming to school every day is a big deal. And that, that will pay off when those students test because many of those students are your lowest-performing students that are not coming to school. So this is a great accomplishment. I want to commend our team. I know we talked about Heather and Esther and Amber, but every single school has an attendance committee, and they are relentless with getting kids into school. And that is going to translate in test score results also. But it also means we're keeping kids in school. I'm sorry, Craig, but I'm going to do this.
And Dr. Prince, to that point, if you think about it, if you flip it from attendance to absenteeism, if your attendance rate's 90% and you go up by over 1%, your absentee rate was 10%, and you've decreased that by over 10%, that's a huge lift.
Yeah.
And when you look at it by, excuse me, by level, it just equates to about 115 students additional per day in elementary, 85 in K-8, 100 in middle, and approximately 200 students per day in high school that are now attending this year versus last year. And I, I said before, I like to think of that as a small school would more than fill this room with individuals that were not coming. When it comes to the schools that are really performing for us, 93% of our schools have had an increase in attendance. Only three have not. So to highlight some of our top performers and increases, huge shout-outs to these schools. Forest Grove Middle School had a 7.23% increase in attendance rates. Fort Pierce Westwood, over 4%, Treasure Coast High, 2.67%, St. Lucy Elementary, 2.42%. And you can see the other three, Fort Pierce Central, Southwest, I'm sorry, St. Lucy West Centennial, and Morningside. Big shout-outs to each of those schools and principals, along with all of our other schools, that have made great progress. Moving along to our Goal Four, specifically zeroing in on metrics of safety, I want to talk a little about discipline again. Shout-out to our Student Services Department that leads that work. And when we look at some data, I want to orientate you to the slide, that there are two different colors. If you look at the lighter blue on this slide, that shows the total number of referrals in each of the years that are listed on this, starting with 2016 to the left is in the blue. And you see about 31,000 referrals that we had in 2016 from quarters one through quarter three of that school year. Keep tracking along to your right, you get to 2024. And if you go all the way to 2024, and you stay on that same lighter color, you see approximately 32,000 referrals. Now, the darker blue represents our overall enrollment for that year, which you can see starting on the left in 2016 and increasing significantly to the right. If you look at that dark blue, that's our enrollment from 2016 to 2024, represents a 15% increase over that time period. If you look at the lighter blue, the referrals, that represents only a 3% increase. So that shows that we have relatively increased our performance in terms of handling discipline because we have not increased in our number of referrals while at the same time significantly increasing our enrollment. So credit for that. So enrollment goes up by 15%, referrals only go up by 3%, okay?
Craig, I'm going to state the obvious there. If your enrollment goes up by 15%, what would you anticipate your referrals to go by?
Yeah, it should, should be 15% if it's the same.
Exactly, exactly. But that just, once again, to your point, our, our teachers, our deans, I mean, we've done a fantastic job of working to address, you know, behaviors since 2016. So it's really commendable.
And another good point, another glow that we want to share is our Level Four, which our most, our most severe incidents measuring quarter one to quarter three have dropped compared to last school year by nearly 300 incidents of a Level Four. So kudos to that. And a lot of the credit goes to how we get the kids to school because the day starts as kids are on the bus. But when we also want to highlight some of the top schools that have decreased, so these are all drops in referrals. Big shout-out to Alternative Programs and Dale Castance, our alternative. That is the big increase in that number when it comes to handling our referrals. St. Lucy West Centennial, negative 736. So this school year compared to last, they have decreased their number of referrals in quarters one through three by 736. Great gains, Southport Middle, Sam Gaines K-8, again, St. Lucy L., Port St. Lucy High, and you see the rest, White City, Lawnwood, Alapata, and Cast have all decreased their number of referrals from quarter one to three compared to last year. And as I said before, we can't do this work without having the kids get to school safely. And just want to call up one of our rock stars who works with Terrence O'Leary, Mr. Jacunti Prince, wants to talk to us a little bit about our student discipline on the bus.
Good morning. Morning, Chairwoman, Board, Dr. Prince. So I'm going to try to give a quick recap of what we are experiencing this school year on our buses. There has been a slight uptick to his point in that, that correlation can be seen on buses as well. So for the 2324 school year, we've had an increase in ridership of 13%. It tracks right alongside the, the population growth here that we're seeing in our schools and the, and the increase in attendance rates. Transportation has 11.6% referral increase rate this same semester, year-over-year. 132 more incidents from January to March this year versus last year for the third quarter. Now, to be very, very specific, due to just sheer targeting of where these referrals are occurring, we have a plan. We have our laid-out plan on our approach to how we're going to address disciplinary issues. But at the same time, we can see exactly where it's occurring, and we got the engagement from the schools to help make sure that when there is an incident, everybody receives discipline and there can be a corrective action to the student. Because as we know, with the increased ridership, the increased attendance rates, there will be a slight uptick, but at the same time, it all goes together. So what, what we have here is, I believe we have buy-in from the schools. We have support from our, our teachers, we have support from the principals, and it allows us the ability to not lose staff from our side of the fence. Next, let me see, there we go. So, and going backwards to what the actual plan is. Last year, we started out with the PBI's training. That's making sure that our drivers, our aides, we actually have a framework of approaching disciplinary issues on our buses. That is a continuing and ongoing strategy. If a new hire is hired, they're still receiving that training. There's also the biannual refresher. So every two years, they're going to continue to receive this training. That's tracked, that's ongoing, and it's continuing. The direct manager intervention. Now, this is the part where we have to be involved with our managers to ensure that they're following up. What we tend to see is a driver will say, I'm experiencing an issue. That, and it's in passing. That's them raising their hand to say, I need help. And our managers are actually taking that language. And before there's a flare-up, before there is a large issue, we have the opportunity to approach the school, we have the opportunity to approach the parent, and we can get everybody in the boat together. So that right there is the primary point in which we have gotten better. And we've received that support from the schools. Also, there's still our daily seat bill audits. We call it a seat bill audit, but in actuality, what it is, it's our ability to look at what's occurring on the bus because we have a staff of, what, 300 routes, but I only have six area managers. But we're reviewing videos, we're reviewing these occurrences of incidents each day. So when we're reviewing these videos, that gives us the opportunity to give feedback to the driver, to the aide, to the school, to the parent. So from there, without having to physically go out, we can have that one-on-one conversation with the driver, with the aide, and say, hey, I note this, I note this behavior, or hey, you could try this or try that differently. So it's all helpful in that sense. So from there, even though we may see an uptick, it's all relative, if that makes sense. Thoughts or questions?
I want to commend Jacunti for just the transformation that we've kind of taken over in, in his department. A great communicator, just a superb communicator with his employees constantly. They're constantly getting feedback because really, our bus discipline has, has taken on a real priority for us because it's the first interface for students with the district. And if the buses go well, and the kids get off the buses safely without having conflict, then their day's going to go well. So I want to thank Jacunti for really realizing all of these processes. It's, it's strengthened our communication with the school centers because they're constantly communicating about students' issues, how they can address them on the buses to make sure that it's a seamless, when they go in, they're ready to learn and they're not having behavioral issues. So thank you, Jacunti, I really appreciate it.
Mr. Jacunti.
Yes, ma'am.
To kind of feed off what Dr. Prince said earlier about his experience as a child and, and needing that support system. I was a bus driver, and I lasted one year. And I, no shame in my game. And what I needed as a substitute driver, I needed the support of the village. In other words, I needed the support of the principals, I needed the support of the, of the teachers. I needed the support of the district. And I also was a substitute teacher as well, okay? I needed that same thing in that position. We had to work together for that child to excel and, and achieve. And it was, you know, when you have a bus driver, going back to bus transportation, their concern is to keep everyone safe on that bus. But their back is also to the child. And children are going to be children. Some are more, you know, rumbunctious than others. But they need to know that there are limits, they need to know that there are rules to abide by. And they need to know that these rules are going to be followed up, and it needs to be consistent. And so I understand how the chewancy can go up slightly while you're trying to make that happen because you have to get that kid that is really trying his or her limits with that adult to understand that there is a place that you don't go above. And so I too appreciate your work. When I say I was a substitute teacher and a substitute driver, that's been many, many, many years ago. But I still remember the experience and I still understand being part-taker of that, how vitally important it was. I was one of those drivers that I would, after the kids were dropped off, I would write referrals on all the kids that, you know, on, on the students that acted up. But one thing I could say is when I finished with the bus, the driver was able to come back on and have a controlled atmosphere, you know, of kids. And so it is important that we all work together. And if we're going to keep employees and staff, which is huge, because I lasted one year.
And I think that's, that's the actual primary point, is the retention.
The retention.
When, I would say, maybe when I first came on until now, there's been a, a complete change. The driver may have felt, the aide may have felt, they lacked that support. When you have your back turned and your primary goal is to perform safely on road, you're protecting the general public more so than the students almost to a degree because you're safe on a bus. So if you're distracted while driving, we know what that leads to. If they don't feel supported, that leads to the loss of retention. The loss of retention on my side, and HR can attest because they've been doing a heavy lift helping us stay staffed, that leads to additional disruption in the system. The first person they meet in their day is going to be that driver, that aide. Well, there's an opportunity where you don't get to meet the driver. That's because we're not staffed and we're not getting the students to school on time or we're not picking them up. So we've gotten away from that. And with the increased support from the schools, from the administrators, we are holding on to our employees longer. If we can turn over our twenty percent of our staff in thirteen months and not lose a beat, that lets you know that we are doing something right. You don't hire a hundred-plus drivers, a hundred-plus aides and have this type of return rate. So obviously, this takes a, a village to make this happen, but we have that support for once and, and I can attest to that personally.
Well, thank you for your work and, and your insight and the growth that we've had up under your leadership. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the support.
I have one question, and go ahead, Mr.
Real quick, Jacunti, it looks like a very comprehensive plan, your action plan. The question I have, and maybe John can, I brought it up before, the budget, all of this costs money, the budget, again, are we going to be fifty percent short of what we budget compared to what we get from the state? Once again, I don't want, I just want to know that, the answer to that. I don't want to know how we're going to make up for it. Is that true?
Well, the bottom line is we take in twenty-six million and, I mean, we take in eleven, we spend twenty-six. That's why we have to completely rethink, you know, whenever we open the high school and we know, we open the new K eight, you know, we've got a consultant in now that's going to be advising us on how we can tighten the zones, put a less of a footprint on the road so that we can ultimately break even. I don't know any district that, that doesn't run a deficit in transportation because we just simply aren't fully funded by the state. But we're going to make sure our kids get to school and I can tell you, in the next two to three years, we will have less of a, a footprint on our roads than we have today.
So it's more than fifty percent, it's more like a sixty percent deficit.
That's correct.
Thank you. Good job.
Yes, sir. Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Jacunti.
Wait, Mrs. Richardson.
I have a question for you. In terms of the transportation and setting the boundaries and all of that, you talked about approaching the things that you do. So I think that the parents' involvement, approaching them when we have the referrals, is that something that we are actively doing? Speaking to the parents, do, I mean, I'm sure they are aware of it, but is that making a difference?
So, to, to be specific, the actual process before moving to a referral is to make parent contact. Let's say John is being disruptive on the bus today. The goal is then to contact the parent and see if the parent helps support the student's behavior on the bus. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. It all depends on how invested the parent is in that child. And, and all things aren't equal, we know that, but it helps. Yes, and sometimes, you know, there may not be involvement, but for the people that, that do decide to, to jump in with us, we have a more immediate response on correcting the behavior.
And, and I think that speaks to what Mr. Armstead was, spoke about today about building relationships. We've, you know, start just kind of with the, with the bus driver, build a relationship with the parent, maybe to get them to help, you know, with the, the discipline or, you know, make sure they're, I don't know.
I'll give it to you like this. For us, it's the process. The process is to make the parent contact, to at least engage. Our job as managers and as administrators is to make sure that we're making, we're taking step one. Regardless of the scenario of the student, we have to be, we have to treat all students equally. So if the process, if we see a, a, a student who needs a corrective action or talk with or work with, whatever that may be, if we aren't even, then we're going to continue to have uneven responses from the student. So as long as we follow our process, that being engaged irregardless of the result, that's what we're looking for out of our staff members. So yes, the building of the relationship matters, absolutely, and that the first step is maintaining the process.
Thank you. I just wanted to, you know, see if, about the parent involvement because that's a part, obviously, it is the village.
Yes, again, the, we, the pa, the parent is actually, and this, y'all can correct me if I'm incorrect. But what we do in our schools, what we do on our buses, we, it almost loses the point if we don't have that support at home at times. So we want to build a relationship, we want to maintain that relationship. I meant, I went to go meet with the parent, same with St. West K eight last week. The parent didn't show, you know, so in a scenario like that, what do you do? Well, I said, well, I'm here. I informed the parent that I would be here, he didn't show. So what do we do? We contacted the parent. The parent apologized. The parent was receptive to what we were trying to have the outcome to be for that student. So regardless of what their response is, it's the maintenance of the process that will create the engagement.
Thank you.
Can I just add to that? And the one thing I heard very clearly with what you just said was, after the parent didn't show up, you didn't give up on the parent.
Correct.
You kept the relation, you called them and you made, you, you helped them see the error of their ways. And that parent was able to, that, I find that when parents are involved, the children perform better.
Yes.
And not, we say that, but when you live it and you see it, it's a, means, takes on a whole different meaning. When the parent is involved as much as possible, and, and I know that our teachers work diligently and everybody's tired at the end of the day. But let that parent know right away and that child most likely will straighten up when we can't do it, the parent can do it.
And that's exactly why we have maintained the process, yes.
Yeah, and that support is so important, that they get the support, but you get the support from the district as well, so, the department. So thank you so very much.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Mr. Superintendent, I do want to go back. First off, I appreciate this report and I understand the attendance report and I understand the referral report. But this is one of the things that I don't like to discuss out in public because sometimes it gives a perception that, I, I don't know, I just don't like to, you, you, you put out referrals and they say, oh, we'll cut referrals and then it just says a message to some, not, but we're doing it. A message to the principals that, you know, hey, reduce your referral, referral rate. And you just don't write them, which is not actually the case here. But I do have a concern. What was, what's, what's the reason for the uptick from last year? Do you have any inclination?
Are you, so let me go back, so we're in the same spot.
Twenty-three to twenty.
Are you referring to this?
Yeah, it's a seventeen percent increase.
Uh, we could run that, you know, in terms of exactly what it is, but if you look at really an uptick, it's, I guess, how you define it. There's a slight increase, but that goes along with enrollment.
Not really.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to say this. First of all, Mr. Ingersoll, you will never hear this coming out of my mouth that we need to reduce the number of referrals that we write.
Actually, I heard the opposite.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I've, I've told.
That's why I'm saying is, I, I appreciate that more so. But when people listen to it on TV, it's like, oh.
But what, what I want to clarify is we are going to run the schools and we will have control in our schools. And if, if a child goes to school, they will be safe in a St. Lucy County public school.
That's what I want to hear.
We, and that is something that, that, that is my philosophy. And I will say that we had a significant uptick semester one where, you know, we had significantly larger number of referrals in the previous year and now we've seen a, a significant decline, not because we told everybody that they need to decline, it's simply because the students understand what the expectations are, you know? And, and also, when you've got five hundred more students coming every day, Mr. Ingersoll, you're going to see an uptick in the number of referrals. It's cause and effect. So, you know, we, we do, my philosophy is, I don't care how many referrals are written as long as we have control in our schools and as long as our schools are safe. That is what I tell the principals and that is, you know, my philosophy. So I just, I just wanted to, to share with you the simplest explanation of why we have an uptick is five hundred more students are coming every day and there's your number. I mean, because those, you've, you've just got more students attending every day.
Well, the number doesn't match though. Because you're, you went up five hundred, that's a one percent, but we went up seventeen percent in referrals.
And, and what I would submit to you is, the philosophy was, we're going to have control in our schools.
No, that's what I applaud you for.
Yeah.
But if we're going to look at it, I would still wonder what, what caused the uptick. I mean, reading my text, I can, I can see quite a few of it.
Well, I can, I can tell you where we've seen a huge uptick is in kindergarten. I mean, that's, surprisingly, you know, you've got kids that, that are not, they, they're kids of COVID, you know, they're, they've, they're, they're coming with no, no, no guardrails. You know, we had a significant uptick in kindergarten, one of our middle grades, reduction in high school. And the bottom line is, we've, we've, I think some of our principals have had a philosophy that we're going to real have, you know, we're going to have control of the school. And I've, I've encouraged that, not discouraged it.
Oh, I, trust me, I don't mind looking at a higher referral rate. For me personally, I don't prefer ever, you know, just track it like this. I just want to know, because this is how we realized we had issues on the buses, you know? And that's how, if we don't address these situations and look at them, we can't figure out where we need to, 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 to put it in there. And that's, that's where I'm saying is, is it mental counseling, is it, you know, is it, you know, we have to send truancy workers and, and find out, you know, what's going on at the home? You know, this is how we, we open the onion and, and see what's, what, what the true answer.
Well, I will say that, that Dr. Summer did make a point, an important point is we've seen a significant decline in our Level Four referrals. So it goes back to, you know, the broken window theory of economics where, you know, if you focus on little things, big things don't happen. And I think in a nutshell, that's been the philosophy. You're seeing more Level One referrals, fewer Level Fours.
An example of what I, from my own experience, I ran a smoother bus transportation system when I was on that, those buses because if I had to be a substitute for the whole week, after they got that first referral and the parent got contacted way back then, we were doing it. And maybe to the, not to the extent we're doing it now, but I had no problems on the bus anymore, you know? So it does work. If I let that kid continue to just act out and then wait till it gets a big problem, then I'm not helping that kid at all. Because then that kid goes, doesn't know their, their limit. So I, I can understand even with the, the seventeen percent or whatever, I can understand that you, you can have a kid that needs, they need to, they need to hear it more than one time, even with the parent being, but you, we're, we're working with these kids. I don't think it should be something that's on their record and, you know, as an individual student and, and tarnish them for the rest of the days. But I understand that when you catch something early, you don't have a, as big of a problem later on and I, that's where I can see those Level Four fences substantially going down because of that.
I'm just saying, is it new teachers, is it substitutes, does it happen in the cafeteria? Have we, have we looked at it? Is it certain schools?
I will say, Mr. Ingersoll, I look at this every possible way you could possibly imagine, down to where incidents occur, who incidents are, are with, how can we support teachers? You know, how can we work with folks on, on discipline, behaviors, you know? It's, it's a, it's a very, it's a very extensive process. And I would say, you know, going back to two thousand and sixteen, if I, if I looked, did a look back to two thousand and fifteen, fourteen, thirteen, those numbers would have exceeded twenty twenty-four. And we had, you know, ten thousand fewer students. So we've done a really good job. It's just also, to be fair, you know, COVID really had a huge impact.
You can't say COVID because I was even looking at the numbers. I was like, even during COVID, our referral rate was at twenty-seven thousand.
But.
And we didn't even finish the year in school.
You just also have to look at readiness. We, we've looked at it every different which way, so. And I, and I don't want, I don't want to get hung up in this because quite frankly, our schools are safe. The morale of our teachers is high, we've got good momentum, our teachers feel supported. What Craig is going to be pivoting to next, to me, is far more important from a philosophical standpoint of where we're going as a district and just, and also where, where we're going to be going into next year with, with rethinking how we do things in our schools. Craig?
Yes, sir. Dr. Prince, I will pivot, looking at goals two and three, which are focusing on improving math and improving reading.
Before you move on, Madam Chair, I just wanted, real quick, I agree with Dr. Prince one hundred and ten percent. If those referrals aren't up there, we're not doing our job and we need to keep control. That, that number doesn't bother me at all. Just keep it. I've been through this with the local police department for years and other instances and you can equate it with that. If you're not writing tickets, you're not doing your job. So the referrals are okay. John, that, you said that, perfect. That's the last time you probably get a compliment from me.
So I'll, I'll pivot to accelerating our students' learning. And I have to, to acknowledge our curriculum department, teaching and learning, and our executive director, Ms. Denise Rodriguez, our director of secondary curriculum, Liz Pruitt, Heather Belitho, our director of elementary curriculum, and a number of other staff that have just led the work and done an incredible job when it comes to accelerating it. As Dr. Prince mentioned earlier today, he's looking at making this one of our goals for FY twenty-five is acceleration. So you hear that term over and over again, acceleration and acceleration for all students. So really, you know, we want to ask that question is how can acceleration enable students to access college scholarships and create those first generation students? And I want you to think about it today as we look at the continuum of what acceleration looks like in our schools and you see all three levels, elementary, middle, and high school, leading towards scholarships because each level matters and there is acceleration in each level. And there are opportunities in third through fifth grade at elementary for students to take middle school coursework. At the middle school level, there's opportunities for students to eventually get and scaffold their way up to high school coursework in middle school. And then in high school, there's opportunities for students to access college level work, some as early as ninth grade. So let's take a look at the elementary experience. We'll start with that, okay? So our journey for elementary really focuses on the benefits of acceleration on something called AMP, okay? And students that are in AMP, which stands for the Accelerated Math Plan, have experienced higher levels of proficiency at the end of the year, regardless of how they start the year. It gives students access to rigorous coursework in math and science and it gives students the opportunity to become a problem solver and a critical thinker. And there's multiple on and off ramps to it. So let's take a look at how it works, okay? So in this slide, I'm going to orientate you to the right side. And I'll draw a little box around grade three. You highlight our grade three students in AMP. How does it work? Those students will actually learn in third grade, the third grade math standards, as well as half of the fourth grade math standards. And at the end of the school year, I underlined it, they will take the third grade fast. Pretty straightforward until the next year. In fourth grade, students that are in AMP in fourth grade, they've taken it in third. The next school year comes, they're in fourth. Those students will receive instruction on those second half of the fourth grade standards because they got half in third. Now that they're in fourth, they receive the heck, second half of fourth and all of fifth. Now that they're in fourth, they receive the heck, second half of fourth and all of fifth. And those students are accelerated because at the end of the year, again, they're now in fourth grade, the underline shows, they take the fifth grade fast. So again, AMP works. You're in third grade, take the third grade fast, fourth grade, take the fifth grade fast. And then the fifth grade, you end up taking the sixth grade fast. You are accelerated in your learning. Question, of course, comes, what is our enrollment? And what's our percentage of enrollment?
Real quick, I just wanna say, whenever you're doing something like this, you get some trepidation, because if, if a student is in the fourth grade and they're learning the fifth grade standards and they're gonna take the fifth grade test, that, that can freak people out. What if they don't pass? Right? Like, you know, are, are they going to pass that test? And you sometimes get some reluctance that makes people uncomfortable. But I, I think we're gonna show some things later that, that our kids can be successful doing this.
Coming up real soon. In fact, what's our enrollment look like? So how many kids currently in St. Lucy are in the Accelerated Math Plan? If you look to the right, the dark bar shows 2024. That's this school year. About 7% of our students are enrolled in AMP. Seven percent.
Seven, okay.
Yeah, 7%.
Okay.
And that shows an increase from when we opened access to the program in 2020. And it's essentially for our enrollment, we've more than doubled for our white students, tripled for our, our Hispanic, and approximately quadrupled for our black students, which is on the slide, in terms of access to AMP from 2020 to 2024, which is this school year. So we've had an increase from 2, 2% to 7, yes.
And going back to that, doubled for white students, tripled for Hispanic students, quadrupled for, for black students. So since we started this program in 2020, we've, we've enrolled four times more, uh, black students. Three times Hispanic students and twice as many white students. I always say this, opportunity should be colorblind. Opportunity should be colorblind. And it also goes back to access and advocacy for kids. We, we should be advocating for kids, even if their parents can't necessarily, are unable to advocate for them. And this is why we do this. And when we say 7.1% this year, this is going to be a big push for us moving forward, because we, we can do so much more with this.
And here's the why, because you have to ask the question, as we challenge our students with acceleration, meaning kids in fourth grade as an example, taking a fifth grade test, well, how are they performing? So as we see our acceleration performance, I'll orientate you to the right. All the way to the right, which shows last school year's test scores. And in the blue were the AMP students' pass rates. So students that were in fifth grade, again, they took the sixth grade test. 98% of them were proficient. If you go to the fourth grade, which is to the left, a few bars over, you see grade four, 2023 in blue. They were 96%. If you go to 2023, that's third grade, that's a little further over, grade three. It's actually the third bar from the left, the tall, that's the 100%. So 100% of our AMP students were proficient last year in third grade, 96% in fourth, and 98% in fifth. The red represents our non-AMP students, which shows the difference between your proficiency as a student, if you're an AMP or if you're not an AMP.
Um, yeah, I, I thought you were gonna stop at page 12 for questions, because this is a lot of information.
Sure, sure. Was it this one?
But, yeah, um, they, how, well, the, the students, we have 47,000 students enrolled, roundabout. And 10%, I'm just gonna take an estimate, 10% of these children, these students are in the, that advanced class, right? So that's about 407?
So we wanna drill down to grades three through five. So there's about 3,000 students per grade level in, in grades three through five. So the 7% is of grades three and four, three, four, and five only.
I see.
Not of the overall.
Okay.
So in grades three, four, and five, 7% of our third, fourth, and fifth graders are enrolled in an AMP program. 7% of third, fourth, and fifth students.
7% of them are enrolled in this program.
Correct, yep.
But aren't we having an issue with children not doing well in math? So where, where, where is, how are, we're talking about proficiency, but there are also deficiencies. So how does that work? And are there special classes that these kids are in? Are they separated? Um, I mean, how, how, how is it working?
Sure, sure, yeah. So students will, will be in a section at their school specifically designed for AMP.
Okay, so we separate those kids and they're going to?
So if you have 100 kids at the school and you have 20 in AMP, they'll be in the class together.
Okay.
And the others will have a different teacher with different sections. So yes, they are, they are targeted with a specific teacher that is going through that curriculum specifically to accelerate them. So correct. Most schools will have one class, one teacher per grade level, as an example, if they have. And I'm speaking hypothetically.
Okay.
So the kids are together, okay?
Okay. All right, you can, thank you.
And 7% of our kids in third, fourth, and fifth are in an AMP program. When you look at their performance, nearly all of them are proficient at the end of the year, even though they're taking the next school year's assessment. The middle school journey, okay? There, there are multiple on and off ramps. Some kids don't get into an accelerated math program until sixth grade, and it's very similar, right? If they're going into an accelerated program in sixth, you can see the brackets, they'll receive the sixth grade standards math instruction and half of seventh. And in the next school year, the same, the rest of the seventh grade and all of eighth, which is also known as pre-algebra. And then their final year in, in middle school, they'll take Algebra I. So there is an acceleration on ramp for students that have not had access to AMP in, in elementary to also enter an accelerated program in sixth grade in middle school. So there's multiple on and off ramps in this program. This is how the middle school on-ramp works. And it's a really important point that Dr. Prince made about giving access to students to Algebra I that I wanna make is, because, um, our acceleration, I'll, I'll back up for a second. How many kids are in accelerated program in middle school? Let me answer that first, okay? So what percentage of our kids, before I make the point as to how beneficial it is, what percentage of our students in middle school are in some type of accelerated program? In 2024, that was 43%. Good news to that is we're up from 2015, which was only 22%. We've essentially doubled our, our students in some type of accelerated middle school program. Wanna hit that part, okay? So this is just sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, 44%, 43%, excuse me. How, oh, I'm sorry.
But I, percentage doesn't give me a number. Um, I'd like numbers like, is it 2,000, 4,000, so that I can kind of put it in perspective?
I like to just think of, we have approximately, this is, I'm gonna give you approximates. We have approximately 3,000 students per grade level, give or take a few, right? And some are bigger than others. So if you think about 40% of 3,000, that's about 1,200 kids per grade level, which on the three grade levels, which is gonna be about 10, 11,000 students. I can get you the, that is not the exact number, I know, but that's about, that's an approximate, okay? And how are they doing, right? Well, we look at the data that we have in front of us, and in blue, we see the proficiency of our students that are in some type of accelerated program in middle school. And nearly 80% of them, if you look all the way to the right, 80% of those students that are in accelerated middle school programs some kind ended the year at a Level Three or higher on the math assessment. So it just shows why it's so important for us to get our kids into an accelerated program, because in the red, if you look to the right, only, only 4, only 34% of our students that are not in accelerated program in math were proficient math at the end of the year. Okay? And I know what you're thinking, obviously, some of the kids were gonna fly regardless. Our question is, how do we get those kids that are on the bubble into the accelerated programs and into those classes where they're receiving instructions to the level where they will be successful at the end of the year? That's the, that's the art and the science we're looking at, okay? Going back to Algebra I, let's think for a second at the top, right? I talked about AMP in third grade. If you start AMP in third grade as a student, the Accelerated Math Plan, you can get into Algebra I by seventh grade. This just shows each school year, grade three, grade four, grade five. By the time you follow the course content, you can get into Algebra I by seventh grade if you're in the AMP program. If you enter, uh, sixth grade, let's say for some reason, you're new to St. Lucy, you didn't get into AMP, if you get onto our on-ramp in sixth grade for the accelerated math program, you get into Algebra I by eighth grade. If you don't enter into one of our elementary and our middle school accelerated programs, you will not be in Algebra I until ninth grade. Okay, so that was to Dr. Prince's point about how important it is for us to understand the connection to scholarships and acceleration in elementary and middle, because we're making those decisions early in a, in a child's career.
What do we do with a child who is in the AMP program, but they're getting Fs?
Yeah, you know, and there, that's a great question. So what do we do with, there has to be supports for accelerated programs, just like all the other kids. So there needs to be, of course, there are potential off-ramps. The student can always exit the program and go back into the regular, so that they don't fail, right? But there needs to be supports in place to make sure that that doesn't happen, which could include additional tutorials after school, okay? Parent meetings and so on. So great question. But I wanna make this point about how important it is to accelerate our kids, because if you look at the Algebra I pass rates in the state of Florida, I listed it by grade level. So think of the AMP kid that gets into Algebra I by seventh grade. If you look to the left of this chart, it says seventh, and it's got a big 93 at the top. In the state of Florida, 93% of our seventh graders took Algebra I past it. In the state of Florida, 84% of the eighth graders that took Algebra I passed it.
Yeah, I just wanna point out that that's a graduation requirement, the algebra exam. So if you're, if you're an AMP in seventh grade, you've already, 93% of those students have already secured that.
And if you didn't get access to an accelerated program in elementary or in middle school and your first time taking Algebra I is ninth grade, what are your chances in the state of Florida of passing that test? 36%, okay? Almost one in three pass it the first time they take it. And our kids will take a retake, of course, and will eventually pass it, but that is the first time passing rate. So it just begs the question, which program do you want your child in? The one with a 36% chance or the one with a 93? Our challenge is always working towards getting our kids to that 93. How does it start? With AMP and with accelerated math. I'll also touch on high school, okay? And I'll, I'll try to make some word soup for you today, right? A little lesson in accelerated coursework. Uh, there's a lot of benefits to college level coursework in high school. So again, we talked about doing middle school coursework in elementary. We talked about doing high school coursework, Algebra I, we focused on today, in middle school. Now we wanna talk, well, what are the benefits of taking a college level class in high school? And it all feeds, you know, because the kids that are taking AMP in elementary are the ones doing the college level coursework in high school, right? The ones that didn't get access to AMP are not gonna be doing college level coursework generally, at least until later in their high school career. Now, you're not gonna be the Valer Sal unless you're in college level coursework, because you have the potential to earn weighted points in your GPA. You earn college credit if you take college level courses in high school. You get scholarships, and you're gonna get the competitive advantage when you, when you apply to college. Even, you can even get a scholarship. And just a little bit of word soup, we put on here, and Dr. Prince mentioned these earlier, you can refer to the slide deck, but you'll hear things all the time at the top. Accelerated courses in high school are, all the way to the title, it says AICE or ACE, slash IB, slash AP, slash DE. You'll see those in a lot of our literature. And I just broke, would each one of them, broke it down for you in four little categories. You have the Cambridge International Education, also known as ACE, and I listed what it stands for, IB, AP, and DE. In parentheses next to each of them, I wrote how many students are taking at least one of those courses. So we have 3,268 students taking an ACE course in FY24 this school year. So they will take an ACE exam at the end of the year, okay? And the beauty of the ACE program that I wanna highlight is the fact that ACE, many of the courses have a 70% pass rate when you take, when students take our ACE exams. And if you pass seven exams in the right categories, you automatically, you qualify for a Bright Future Scholarship. I was very lucky as a parent, because I knew this. My own daughter, who was, you know, a student that was not in AMP, got into some accelerated math in middle school, got some access to some ACE courses, passed the right seven tests at the end of the year, and got a Bright Future. So very proud. Beauty of that is, all of our students that earn an ACE diploma will have tuition paid for them, okay? And that's a huge plus for us. So what does college level access look like? I'm gonna use one example of ACE general paper. It's one ACE course. And it just shows, I know, some more numbers. Over the last four years, how many kids have taken this ACE general paper course? Well, we've increased access from 1,421 to 1,785 over the last four years. Nice increase. And what's gonna happen to our pass rates when we do that? That's always the concern. And teachers will raise that concern, so will students. So we always wanna let them know, listen, what, what we've seen is that the more access we give and the more we train teachers, the better kids do. So in 2021, about 54% of those students passed the ACE general paper exam and earned college credit. Last school year, that number bumped up to 71%, even with more kids taking the, the, the course. What that gives is, is about 450 of our kids up to three college credits potentially for English class they won't have to take in college, because they earned the credit in high school. So that's just one example of the benefits of ACE, along with the scholarships that I mentioned before. And again, I'm saying ACE, you can apply this to AP, IB, and dual enrollment, which is a little different. The only concern with dual enrollment, which is a fantastic program, kids need a GPA requirement to get in. You don't need that to get into an ACE class. So you could have maybe messed up a little bit in your, early in your high school career, and you can still get into an ACE course, pass the test, and earn college credit. This is what Dr. Prince was saying, we don't wanna get in the weeds into today, but we do wanna make a point of it, it's the SUS, or the State University System Matrix. You see a lot on here. I'm gonna drill on just one part today, but if you're interested, you can read it when you go home and it kinda walks through what the GPAs and the SAT scores, and even the tuition of, of, of our Florida colleges and universities. But I wanna drill into, uh, the, um, GPA portion, okay? And I wanna make the last point about the benefit of college level classes in high school. That, one of the huge credits I mentioned, Val, you know, valedictorian, salutatorian. They take college level courses. Why? Because an A earns more points. When I was in high school, I just thought an A was four points on my GPA. You get weighted credit as it goes along. You get some students graduating, earning their valedictorian and salutatorian in different counties. That's how their, their GPA goes up to 6.0 or 5.3, because they've taken college classes and got As in them, because they earn more credit. Each county deals with them a little different. But I just wanna point out how important it is for that competitive advantage, to where the classes I put you in as a student will determine which college you go to. And I want you to now think, it's not just high school, it's elementary, middle, but let's zoom in on high school. When I get my GPA at the University of Florida, when I go to apply, their mean acceptance rate, their middle 50% was 4.4 to 4.6 last school year. You can look at, you can look at the other schools on the SUS matrix, but that, what that, what does that mean? Not only do I need all As as a student, I need all As and I need them in college level courses. Otherwise, I'm not getting in. So to Dr. Dr. Prince's point, if we're providing acceleration and opportunities for all students, we have to strategically schedule those students into the most rigorous courses they can handle. Why? Because there's a, there's that college thing that we want them going to and getting into the college of, of their choice. Let them pick where they wanna go, but we wanna get them ready for that, okay? So again, um, I included this slide one more time to, to kinda hammer home the benefits of college level coursework. And our biggest program currently is ACE, but with, there is benefits to IB, AP the same way. Weighted points, college credits earned, competitive advantage, and then the scholarship portion. And then I just want you to think about that ACE diploma and IB diploma. You take the right number of exams, you get a full Bright Future Scholarship in the state of Florida. So kudos to our staff. I know you've been asking questions along the way, and I know I've had a lot of material, but any other questions, I'm happy to take now.
I, I do wanna say something for the TV audience. When we talk about referrals, it is not the amount of students. Does that make sense?
Yep. A couple of comments while, while Craig is here. First of all, uh, Dr. Summer, great job. This is kind of our philosophy, our overarching theme. I'll use my son as an example. My son, uh, was scheduled into classes he didn't necessarily assign himself, uh, because he had advocates, of course, you know, he's got his dad that's, that's deputy superintendent at the time that's advocating, but the Treasure Coast did their job. They scheduled him into some challenging classes. And I can tell you right now, as a ninth grader, he wasn't aspiring to go to the University of Florida. By about 11th grade, he saw, I've got the GPA, I just need the SAT, and I might be able to get in. And that's exactly what he did. We've got kids that don't aspire, but once you're given opportunity and access, that becomes a self-fulfilling prophecy. And you realize that you've got talent and you can do great things. You just need other people lifting you up and telling you, you can do it. And that's kind of what our philosophy's been. I also wanna, uh, you know, once again commend Craig. We have a great staff that. The folks behind me are incredibly talented and we are so fortunate in that really, and I'm just going to just give kudos to the board. You know, over the last few years, we've been able to hire people like Chakunti Prince, Dr. Craig Summer and some of the other folks on cabinet and staff because of what St. Lucie County has to offer, and that starts with the school board. You can't ask people to upend your life if we don't have a cohesive and supportive school board that promotes the mission of having kids be successful. So I can tell you I appreciate you. And Dr. Summer, I want to tell you I appreciate you. You've done a great job in your first year.
Thank you, Dr. Prince. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Board. Appreciate you guys.
You still have another couple of months, so just throwing it out there. All right. I didn't know if you wanted to take a break before the last presentation or if you want to keep going. Okay, all right. So our last presentation, I'd like to say that I maybe saved the best for last. This is a CTE, kind of an overview. This actually has some really good stuff with with Dr. Wild and Rod Nada. With all of the things we're doing, we just focus on our kind of our academic end with, you know, students that are bound for college. But we've also got students that are going to have opportunities to immediately enter the workforce and we're providing a ton of opportunities for our kids. And Dr. Wild, welcome back. She's been out of town and you get to jump right in on the first day back.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Madam Chair, Board members, Superintendent Prince. Always an honor to present and share great success in St. Lucie Public Schools. As Dr. Prince said, we are here today to talk about career technical education, give you an overview. I am co-presenting today with Mr. Roderick Nada. He is the Executive Director of Federal and Special Programs, which is part of the Office of Teaching and Learning. And Ms. Alicia Sights is not able to be with us today, unavoidable conflict. So he is stepping in on her behalf. He supervises her currently. With that said, this presentation is very personalized. You're going to see our students in action in today's presentation and I need to thank our amazing communications department. The quality is exceptional today, so I want to thank Lydia Martin and her team. And you'll see why I wanted to call attention to that in just a moment. We're going to be going over our programs, give you a quick overview of what we offer to our students. We work constantly to make the community aware of our offerings. So this is just one more opportunity to do that. So we're going to give you an overview. We're going to talk a little bit about funding, but we're going to talk primarily about the student experience and the success that our students have had. And also just highlight the importance of our business and community partners in career technical education. Just staying right along the line of what Dr. Summer was just presenting, our success is measurable. We are number one on the Treasure Coast in career and technical education as measured by industry certifications, and I'll talk a little bit more about that acceleration opportunity. I also want to just remind everybody that career and technical education is for all students. It is for students that are going to go straight into the workforce or in the military, but you will see it is also for students who are pursuing college and they are getting a solid background in the different college majors that they may be focusing on. We are also maintaining our status statewide. We are currently twelfth in the state on the relative scale for performance in career and technical education. So we continue to celebrate that success. I want to start off by personalizing this and sharing an experience of one of our students, a graduate of Fort Pierce Westwood. Shad Landy is very successful right now and she has future goals. Let's hear from her.
My favorite part of being a pharmacy technician is the fact that I'm able to be one step towards my dream career and goal and I can help people in the medical field without having to touch blood. My name is Shadland Lehntz. I went to Fort Pierce Westwood Academy. I graduated year of twenty-twenty twenty-three, which was last year, and I'm nineteen years old. I was able to obtain two certification licenses, which is my CMAA, which is Certified Medical Administrative Assistant, and my EXCPT, which is my Pharmacy Technician Ex証証. I'm currently working at Publix Pharmacy where when I'm not in school, I can be working. I can be helping myself get through college while working with my certification. I'm majoring in Biology for pre-farm to become a pharmacist. Having both certifications at the age of nineteen through a program in high school has benefited me in so many ways. It's helped me in school. It's also showing me that nothing is impossible. I've enjoyed being in clinicals. My instructor, I met a beautiful soul. She was an amazing support system. She helped me through everything, especially that I did this in two years. It's very hard, but she helped me and pushed me through each step of the way. And I would say like it's amazing having a support system who believes in you. My name is Shadland Lehntz and I am St. Lucie Public Schools.
I certainly think she can say it better than we can. That is such a personal story there and she is just one of hundreds and thousands of students that graduate from our different programs. As you can see, each of our high schools, every single high school, has a multitude of choices for our students. We we have programs in all of the career clusters. So our students have experiences that are relative to the workforce and to college majors. And we work very closely with the local workforce. So you can see all the choices. All of our schools have a medical program now. It's called Allied Health with different specialty areas. And the reason for that is, number one, it's a very popular choice of students, but much more importantly, it is a big need in St. Lucie County. They are always looking for medical professionals, so you can see that across the board. And then we have a variety of other programs, including what people think of as traditional vocational programs. On this slide, you'll see the Fort Pierce schools, the rest of the schools and all of the programs they list. You also have our latest success guide, which further illustrates all of our programs in our schools as well. And at any time, if you wanted to look up any one of our programs, they are not only listed on our district website, but they are listed on each school's website as well. This is the long list of industry certifications that we offer in St. Lucie Public Schools. It is so long that it requires two slides and it still has a lot of words on it. Those are the two slides and you will see so many of them. These industry certifications are national certifications. They provide students with credentials. You heard that young lady referring to hers with such knowledge and pride. Those are entry-level industry certifications, the same test that adults would take who decide to enter into the field. And our success rate on those exams, they are exams and practical experiences, is among the top in the state, as we've already shared. And you can see here what our numbers look like when it comes to passing industry certification tests. So on this chart behind me, you see where we've come from to where we are now. You can see there was a dip during the pandemic. Some of the industry certifications do require face-to-face experiences with professionals, especially in the health field. So we saw a dip there that was anticipated, maintained our state ranking. And then you'll see another dip, and that is when the state made a lot of revisions. They increased the rigor on the assessments. In many cases, industry certifications that used to be earned by taking one test became part of a bundle where students had to pass two or three or four assessments to to gain that same industry credential. So you can see that that first year, we were doing professional development. We were orienting the students to the changes and then our success skyrocketed. Look at this past year. And that is coming off of all of those changes. And you can see we not only maintained, we excelled past the previous year. So I mentioned that one of our goals is always about getting the word out to people about our programs. That includes adults and community members. It also includes our students. We want them to know what their choices are, what they have available to them. Sometimes you got to work hard to get them to be interested until it's time. So we have started, starting last year, we began to do middle school virtual field trips. And they're through CTE. We're going to keep expanding this because we're finding much success with it. What we have here coming up is a compilation showing you samples of what our middle school students are seeing. But what really happens is they dive into a program for a virtual field trip. They get one long video presentation sharing the details of that program. And then they get to virtually interact with the students and the teachers at the high schools so that they can see what choices they have available. So please, you're going to enjoy this presentation of all of our middle school virtual field trips.
Our agriculture program here is very unique and diverse and it allows students to choose one of three career pathways. The three career pathways that we offer at Fort Pierce Westwood Academy are animal science, agriculture mechanics, and vet assisting. Students can choose one of these pathways after they take the basic agriculture foundations course in ninth grade.
If you are interested in the clerical and administrative aspects of healthcare or clinical or pharmaceutical aspects of healthcare, you can find entry-level healthcare career courses here at Westwood. The four programs we have to choose from are Health Unit Coordinator, Allied Health Assisting, Nursing Assisting, and Pharmacy Technician.
I teach Nurses Aid, Allied Health, and Health Science Foundations. Some of the certifications that the students will be earning in this program are Certified Nursing Assistant, Certified EKG Tech, and as well as other certifications.
Our students learn pharmacy math, pharmacology, how different medications affect the body. Once they complete their four years, they graduate with two certifications.
In our three-year program, you'll learn sports, recreation, and entertainment marketing. In year one, you'll certify as a social media strategist, as I teach you social media marketing. Then we move on to year two for entrepreneurship. You will certify in entrepreneurship and small business and you will work at the Jaguar Bookstore. So you'll learn inventory, how to manage money, how to speak to people in a retail essence. In year three, we move on and we finish out with Project Management Institute's Project Management Ready Certification. So we also work on JAG Print, which is our print marketing here at Port St. Lucie High School, and I teach you how to manage projects.
I happen to be working with DC Motors and how a DC motor works. We work on hard skills and we also work on soft skills. Okay, we work on soft skills. When my students come into my class, the first thing they do is they greet me with a handshake as if they were meeting someone out in industry. They also, as we go down in the program, they start working with the business side of the industry.
We use power tools like drill presses, hand tools such as wrenches, screwdrivers, everything that we need to do to complete our mission of servicing these engines.
In this program, you are able to do plumbing, electrical, carpentry. We have virtual welding. The first quarter that we're here, we learn about safety and OSHA standards and then we are in the shop for the rest of the year. You have plenty of opportunities here to earn certifications. You can earn a Home Builders Institute Core Technology Certification, Home Builders Institute Green Building, and Home Builders Institute Carpentry and Electrical. So you can earn all those industry certifications before you even graduate from high school.
With Technical Design, we start out with Basic Line Concepts. We teach Mechanical Drafting. We use Autodesk products. Starts off with an AutoCAD. We move into Inventor, which is more a three-dimensional drawing program. And we also cover Revit. Revit is more of an architectural program. We have three years of our program. First, Technical One is basically learning the concepts of how to create structures on paper and in the computer. The second year, Technical Design Two, works into three-dimensional modeling. And then we move into Revit where we learn basic structures of small floor plans.
Hey, everyone. My name's Phil Depew. I'm currently the Engineering and Manufacturing Teacher here at Treasure Coast High School. We have been building our program over the last four years, adding CNC, 3D printing, welding. We offer an MSSC along with our other two, Inventor, AutoCAD certifications that can be taken. That also gives them a head start into the program.
Hi, my name is Mr. Buring. I teach Global Logistics Operations here at Treasure Coast High School. With Global Logistics Operations, you will earn your Certified Logistics Associate certification as well as your Certified Logistics Technician certification. With these certifications, you can join the high-demand field in warehouse and distribution with the supply chain. And with these jobs being so high demand, there's actually a very high wage that you can earn for each individual job.
Okay, each program will have a video, longer video like that. You can see the pride in those teachers. For example, the Outboard Marine Instructor, he was a vocational college instructor that moved to Florida and we were able to get him over there in that program. The gentleman that does logistics is former military, did logistics for the military. So we have some really high-quality programs. And we're just thrilled that the Communications Department is doing such an excellent job working with Alicia Sights to get the word out to our students. Mr. Nada?
Good morning. So what are the keys to our success? It's people. We couldn't have done, St. Lucie Public Schools couldn't have done what we've done, gotten to where we are without the leadership of Alicia Sights as our Director of CTE. The team members, if they would stand up for me, please. We have Dr. Lenisha Robinson, Dana Caputo, and Kiraon Belgraves, who are out there every day working with our teachers. But this work also couldn't succeed without our school administrators, without our teachers who are working towards this, without us having access to funding to continue to innovate within our programs. But also, we have expert advice from our community members. We have community stakeholders that have taken an active interest and support in our programs as we've moved on. This success leads to funding. So the CTE program has additional funding that's generated, one, through the students' performance. When they take and pass these certification tests, they generate funds that help support their programs. The teachers also get bonuses for the for the students that successfully earn an industry certification. But the success also means that we can apply for competitive grants that then help us to innovate our programs. We've got the Pathways to Career Opportunities Grant, which brings in money that allows us to fund pre-apprenticeships, to provide equipment to our programs to allow students to continue to be competitive. We've got the Entrepreneurship Education and Training Grant, or EET Grant, which we use again for similar purposes, and our Workforce Development Capitalization Incentive Grant, which allows us to continue to improve our programs because we must continue moving forward.
Okay, pre-apprenticeships is something that we have been working really hard at in the last several years, applying for competitive grants. We've received, I believe, everyone we have applied for to the point that we now have ten pre-apprenticeship programs. Pre-apprenticeships allow students to be eligible for apprenticeship programs when they turn eighteen in the various fields. They require that we partner with an apprenticeship sponsoring organization to qualify and they allow us to provide our students with some real-world type experiences to get ready to enter the apprenticeship once they complete the program. So as you can see, the students are utilizing the same exact equipment that they would have out in the field. And they go, they graduate from high school ready beyond their peers. Rod mentioned the capitalization grant. This is another method that we use to make sure we have state-of-the-art equipment. We buy simulators and other pieces of technology and equipment that we wouldn't otherwise be able to receive. And this is a competitive grant, so I also want to thank our grant developer and our federal programs department. We also have mentioned many times the importance of our business alliances. This is how our teachers stay current and know what's going on. If you've been teaching for 20 years, even if you worked in the field 20 years ago, it's important that you stay current. So our business advisors and industry partners come in and help us with that. They work with our teachers, they serve on advisory boards, they help sponsor our career fairs, our counselor bus tours so that our counselors can provide advice, so on and so forth. The list is endless.
Hello, my name is David Reisch and I go to Treasure Coast High School. I wanted to pursue accounting as a major when I got off to college, or as a career. As of my CTE academy, I learned that I wanted to do accounting. So I decided getting an internship here would help forward my career further along. I've gotten my Certified Internet Worker, Entrepreneurship in Small Business, Certified Logistics Associate, Certified Logistics Technician, and QuickBooks Desktop. Certifications say you know how to do something and no one can take that away from you. I work with accounts payable, I put in travel invoices, wires, purchase orders. One of my teachers, Ms. Chapa, she's my accounting teacher. She definitely pushed me to pursue accounting. Not to mention just all the other stuff that she's done for me. I want to get maybe another internship or a full-on job in accounting because not only does that give me more experience and looks good on my resume, but I just get the experience and know how to do stuff better. And especially with QuickBooks, many small businesses use that. So that just gives me more employability skills because now I can say, I can help you with that. I am David Reisch and I am St. Lucie Public Schools.
So the pharmacy student was a graduate talking about what she learned. And David is a student and he was talking about his internship, real-world experiences while in high school. Rod?
So, again, in order for our programs to move forward, our advisory boards are an integral part. We don't just have one advisory board. We have multiple advisory boards that are working with our different career clusters. And they make sure that what we're offering is relevant. This is just a sample of the advisory board members. And I'm not going to read the slide till you can see who they are. These are people who are in our community, who are active. But there are others. The advisory boards also are made up of our teachers and the members of our CTE department. So, one of the things that's really important to us is that the students also have an opportunity to have experiences. And we have a list of things on here which we're going to talk about and you're going to see some videos on. Because that's the best way for them to tell you about what they're experiencing through our CTE programs. And the first one we'd like to do is going to be the Sunshine Kitchen Cook-Off, which I know most of you attended this year. And it's an annual event where students come and they get to compete against each other, our culinary students, so.
Okay, so the Sunshine Kitchen Culinary Cook-Off is a partnership with the Board of County Commissioners here with the Sunshine Kitchen in St. Lucie County Public Schools. It's a great opportunity for our culinary students to compete with the best culinary students across the district. All the students get the same ingredients. And then they use those ingredients to come up with a dish which our judges so gratefully and gracefully try. And then our judging process begins. But it's a great opportunity for our students, also a great opportunity for our community to see workforce development in action.
We are proud to collaborate with both Indian River State College and the Sunshine Kitchen. The students are getting their real-world experience and demonstrating their skill sets.
Other things that we have our students participate in. We have been able, through the use of grant funds, to sponsor and partner with our community partners to do an entrepreneurship student showcase. So last year, we had students from high schools compete in a food truck challenge where they had to present their concepts for what type of food truck they would do if they were able to land investors. So this is kind of similar to a Shark Tank-type experience where they're going to be, when the students come to these things, they are actually presenting to community members who are in the business, who are going to ask them tough questions and judge their responses and give them feedback to help them get there. This year, they expanded the program, the CTE department expanded the program. And we had various competitions that they could compete in. And we had students from middle and high school competing. And they had to, again, do these presentations. At the end of it, we had some winners, they were awarded. I think we're going to be doing Amazon gift cards. I'm looking over to the team, they're doing Amazon gift cards that are being donated by our community stakeholders. That's their investment in our kids, that's showing the level of investment that they're doing. And the picture at the bottom is awesome. The picture at the bottom is showing the judges who gave of their time and came here to the district office and worked with these kids. And they all say the same thing, they love that interact, being able to interact with these middle schoolers and these high schoolers. But we didn't just limit them to coming to this building. Through a partnership with the Fort Pierce Yacht Club, we were able to offer a Midland High School Marine Expo to showcase jobs in the marine industry here in St. Lucie County. And, again, the video does it way better than I can.
We are here today at the Fort Pierce Yacht Club. We have a great business alliance with them. They've acted as a liaison today for this exploration of various marine vendors. Our students from middle schools and high schools throughout St. Lucie County, they're here exploring, learning about careers, the opportunities that are here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is really exciting. The kids have come through here and are asking all kinds of good questions. And the kids are very, very excited about that. There's multiple booths set up around this area today. All of them have something unique and special to offer for our students in the marine or maritime career field.
The students are here to learn about marine professions and what opportunities there are here in Fort Pierce and in St. Lucie County and on the Treasure Coast.
But we're not done yet. So, another partnership that came up last year was, St. Lucie Public Schools was able to partner with the Florida International University for Center for Translational Science in Tradition and offer student internships. Where students from St. Lucie Public Schools were able to go and work with industry professionals in a five-week program studying these things. And the purpose here is to really showcase for these kids the alternate pathways that they can follow. But also that leading-edge research is being done in St. Lucie County. So, as a result of this, we've had students who were able to go into the labs and do real-time work. But also, Florida International University has now wants to expand this program. And other hospital systems are also looking and looking to partner with the public schools to offer similar experiences for our students.
HOSA is a competition that our students participate in who are in the medical programs, the allied health programs in our school. And this is one of my favorite programs. The experiences are great for our students. Alicia Sights is actually a graduate of an allied health high school program at Centennial where she competed. Then she went on to become a respiratory therapist, then an allied health teacher, and then the director eventually of career technical education. So these programs certainly prepare you for a great future. Here is a video featuring the HOSA competition. And the young lady you're going to see did end up winning regionals and states and then went on to compete at the international level.
The career and technical education component of the allied health program creates opportunities for student-led organizations such as Health Occupation Students of America, otherwise known as HOSA.
HOSA is a student-led organization. And the purpose and function for HOSA is to get students interested in healthcare careers and really expand on what they might already be interested in and give them more content.
My experience with HOSA, I've been the president for the past two years. And it's been a really fulfilling experience because I get to learn a lot about what I enjoy, but also get to like work in a group and be able to collaborate that way and enjoy health-focused things. You are able to win awards and scholarships with a competitive program. You can win at various levels like the regional, state, and international one. But there's also a lot of scholarships for students who want to go into the health career for college.
Okay, very quickly, you can see the real-life experience that they have. And we are about to wrap up. We do have one more video to show you because it is a new addition to our programming. And that is the career fairs that we did start this year. This work, this takes a lot of work. And this was coordinated at the district level with a collaboration across departments. The curriculum department, secondary guidance, the CTE department. And it was a partnership with the Economic Development Council. We offered two career fairs for our juniors and seniors, one in North County and one in South County. I know some of you did attend. Thank you so much for coming out and seeing what was offered. I enjoyed it so much, was able to talk to business and community leaders, both there to teach students about their future opportunities as well as some of them to hire existing students for jobs that are open right now.
This is a great event we're hosting today at the Fenn Center. It's a collaboration with the Economic Development Council and St. Lucie Public Schools. We are doing our second high school career fair here today. We have hundreds of high school students, juniors and seniors, who are getting the opportunity to meet with our business partners, local employers. We have 70 tables of businesses here today. They're talking to students about future careers as well as current job opportunities. The students are learning so much today. They are learning soft skills, they're practicing their interview skills, as well as learning about all of the different local opportunities, the career fields and pathways they have available to them.
8:00 AM, we're going to begin class. They have different topics you're going to learn. You're going to learn reliability.
Plus One Air, we are a private aviation company based at the Fort Pierce Airport. We provide charter services for customers looking to fly privately on corporate aircraft, whether it's business, leisure, travel. An ideal candidate has to really have a lot of organizational skills, good interpersonal skills. As far as the mechanic side goes, you do have to, it's a skill trade. There is an opportunity for an apprenticeship once they get their AMP license. I encourage any student to go do an introductory flight. See if aviation catches you.
The first one at Midflorid Fenn Center, we got a lot of positive feedback. A lot of the kids were excited and I actually got a lot of them to apply. And I actually did go ahead and hire some of them that were there that day. We have youth workers and then we have youth camp aides starting at age 16. It is a seasonal position, but throughout the year, when St. Lucie County is off of school or spring break, Christmas break, we offer positions for them to work throughout the year. We did get a lot of applicants, so that was really good. It was actually one of the best job fairs that I have attended.
I meet a lot of good people and everybody here is super friendly. And I just love coming here because it shows me a lot of good opportunities. So far, I've applied for Texas Roadhouse, but I'm interested in travel nursing. So I just came from the Kaiser booth. I'm going to look into that. I went to the hospice booth and I checked that out. And I'm going to definitely look into that, too. This has definitely provided me with better exposure throughout the area over here. And I would say it's helped me a lot.
I'm in college for finance right now, building enrollment. From my experience, it seems pretty beneficial. I've found jobs with like more benefits than just your average like fast food or retail.
I'm learning new things, learning about new jobs, things I've never heard before. Yeah, I'm just out here learning, taking everything in.
It's a good event. I just checking out booths and wanted to see like what would suit me best as finding a job and showing them my application and my resume. And just learning all the other opportunities that there are out there.
But it did open my eyes to a lot of jobs that I was not really interested at first, but it really opened my eyes. And one that I was the most interested was welding. And I saw multiple stands that included welding offers and job offers. And it really, you know, it really opened my eyes. I liked talking to all the different stands. Really let me know a lot of the jobs in the St. Lucie County and I loved it.
All right, well, that sums it up. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I want to ask you, are any of these, of course, this has overtones, but are any of these programs, that was probably all the time I've been here, I learned more from that segment there than I have in the last three years. I had no idea that our CTE program went that far. Are any of these type of programs offered in the charter schools? I'll just be blunt.
I know that Somerset does have some of them.
Some, yes, Somerset's.
They have some of them, yes. I'm not completely familiar with all of their offerings.
It's a rhetorical question. Dr. Mills goes through teaching the whole child. I wish you'd talk about that more. When I leave, I hope you still talk about that. I just wanted to bring that point up, Dr. Mills and Dr. Prince.
Well, I think.
They are not offered in the charter schools.
I think you actually pointed out that even those of us that work here in the field, you can't always be aware of everything that's happening. And we're always improving and adding programs. So the challenge is getting the word out. And that's why I thank the communications department because a picture's worth a thousand words. And those videos really did get the message out quickly.
Great presentation.
Thank you.
Dr. Wells, can you repeat for the audience's sake, how many career and technical programs do we have?
Oh, you're testing me. I think it's 37.
And out of that 37, how many are certified? I'm testing you with the second question.
Yes, all of them. Every program has a certified teacher that must also pass all the industry certifications themselves before they are allowed to teach in the program. So they're all certified. And all of our programs do offer industry certifications on the national list.
Thank you.
I have a question on the pre-apprenticeship. This happens, they can apply for this after they are 18? Is that after they leave high school, graduate? they are 18, says that after they leave high school, graduate?
They are eligible, once they complete our program, which is a pre-apprenticeship program, they are eligible to apply and actually have an advantage in getting into an apprenticeship program. An apprenticeship program is offered, once they turn 18 and graduate, they can move on to that. The pre-apprenticeship program prepares them for that. Completely aligned.
Okay, so it's not a guarantee, but it's like a pathway?
It's exactly a pathway. That is right. They still have to put forth the effort and be successful, pass their industry certification, pass the courses, and then they move on. And I should add also that they can also use their completion in high school towards college credit as well. The college does recognize and give back college credit. It's called articulation agreements. We didn't emphasize that, but this is also a college pathway.
Okay, so, the pre-apprent, the pre-apprenticeship, is that for certain programs?
We currently have 10 of our programs that are certified pre-apprenticeship programs.
Is there any way you can just name a few?
Yes. Outboard Marine, cook, I have them all right here. Hold on a second. It was that one video that showed all 10 of them, and we have them across the district.
Take your time, because I must have waited.
It's medical assistant, the welding combination, the distribution logistics tech, the surgical tech, cook, outboard marine service techs, pharmacy tech, trust design tech, and industry manufacturing, and carpenter.
What page is that on?
This is a slide that I didn't have in there, but the programs were in that video that listed all 10.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Dr. Wild, Mr. Naught, I just want to thank you. I really appreciate the presentation. There was kind of a theme today, you know, one is acceleration for students for college and providing opportunities for all students. And there is another track, too. We've got a lot of kids that want to go into outboard engines, you know, they want to go into welding. Those are high-paying jobs. I want you to think that really, St. Lucie County Public Schools is the engine of our economy. We work very, very closely with the Economic Development Council, so that, you know, we basically, our programs go where the job markets are locally. And we have a very tight relationship with the EDC, so that there's synergy. So we are creating employees, quality employees, that can immediately enter our workforce and be productive members of our community. And if they're not immediately entering the workforce, we're providing opportunities for those students to go to college with Bright Future Scholarships, to go to college where they've already earned an AA degree, so they only have two years of college left to go. So I can't tell you enough how much I appreciate our staff, our principals, the supports that we provide our kids, because I do think St. Lucie County Public Schools is a destination district, and we are truly a first-class district with providing opportunities for kids. And that concludes our presentations. Ms. Holly.
Thank you, Dr. Prince. I want to echo everything you just said. It is absolutely on target. We are a premier destination for students and families, and that makes my heart feel very, very warm. I also want to thank everybody that's here today. I know it was a long, a lot of material presented, but a lot of things that were refreshed in our minds, and I appreciate that opportunity and the diligence and the passion that you all put into what you do every day. Thank you. There is no other business to come before?
Yes, there is, like, something, if I can, very important to take. I was going to wait till the next board meeting, but there will not be one. Dr. Prince, health, safety, and welfare. If it wasn't for money, we wouldn't have any problems. The goals for the year, everything that we just did, number one thing, this is what we had to concentrate on. I understand that. There's one other thing that we have to concentrate on for the next six months, and I won't be here after six months, but those of you who are, it should be more important or just as important it is to me. And that is the referendum, and we're not, we haven't been talked about that lately. That goes to money. And as you brought up, why am I talking about donor counties? I think the public needs to know those things. That was a segue, just as with the bus thing. I think the public needs to know that we spend more than twice as much money on buses as we're allotted from the state. The public needs to know that. Public needs to know that we offer so much more teaching around the child in our school's CTE programs than they offer in charter schools. Public needs to know all of those things, and we're doing a good job. I mean, we got the greatest staff in the world, greatest employees, teachers, bus drivers, staff, the best, and they need to know that to pass this referendum. If you don't pass the referendum, and John, I know you're acutely aware of it, I had my, I got to tell you, it's still a little bit apprehensive. We had two more years, we were guaranteed to get that money. So I was a little apprehensive about bringing this up two years earlier, but the powers that be and the EDC and yourself conventionally, of course, I'm going to go along with it. That's what we decided to do. But that referendum is everything. I mean, it's just, and I know, I'm conceding that the referendum money doesn't go to a lot of these things we talked about, but if we didn't have the referendum money, we couldn't do all the things we do for the teachers and all the special needs things that we do with it. The referendum is tantamount to everything. We have, like I mentioned at the last meeting, we have so much on our plate. Schools that we're building, I mean, keeping up the attendance, which is, we're doing a great job, not referrals, referrals are referrals, but the referendum is everything. So I would like to ask, yes, they are, I go along, I know what you meant, Troy. So I would just like to ask, if we could, at the WordShocks especially, if we could get an update on what the EDC is doing, what's going on with the referendum, and anything we can do to get more information. The things that I mentioned, just those three things, CTEs, the donor money, we don't know what the, and she's going to look it up, I guess Michelle's going to find out, how much of the donor we are. I think it's even less than 87% now, but we need to know those things. The public doesn't know it, and that's why I was segueing from those things. So, referendum, can we get a report?
Yeah.
Even if it's a short one, what's going on with?
Well, right now, not much. Just a reminder that with regards to, you know, just to make sure that we're clear, it's a halfpenny sales tax continuance that will be on the November ballot. And in the past, these things have gone in the primaries, so you ramp up a little bit earlier. Most of our work will be in the month of July moving forward, and we'll be kind of ramping up for that November date to provide information. We have, we will have a communications plan. We are working with a consultant. We do, the board, I will let you know that we will be having a fundraiser. You'll be probably getting an email later today with regards to a fundraiser. We have our committee chair, Travis Leonard, who's hosting a fundraiser on May 8th at 5:30 at Sailfish Brewery. But, to your point, Mr. Kelly, you will be getting an update, and we'll probably do that at the June workshop with a timeline of what our plan is. But we are also working on a consultant. We'll do polling in late May or early June, and that polling will probably provide us some direction on what our current public support is and provide us a pathway.
As long as it's up there, number one up there with everything else, and health, safety, and welfare, one other thing, and we're going to bring it at the next board meeting, metal detectors, this is a separate thing. Metal detectors goes to safety. It's a lot of money, too much money, I understood, it was when we first looked at it. I understand there's money for it now. If we wanted to put metal detectors in our high schools, so we could look into that and just find out if that's okay, anything that helps with the safety. But we don't have money for it, but if there is available money for it, I don't know, but a lot of, a lot of schools, a lot of districts are going into it. So, anything that provides more safety. I'm sorry to extend everything, but I thought those were both important. Referendum, oh, yes.
Well, Mr. Kelly, to your point, spoiler alert, the passing of the halfpenny will be my goal number one for next year, just FYI. That will be up for the board's approval, but I do recognize how important that is.
You're saying all the right things. Thank you.
I just wanted to, Dr. Wild, if it's okay, if you could email me that list, if you could please, I'd appreciate it, the board, like you normally do. Thank you.
Okay. I think at that point, then, we don't have any other business to come before us, and we are adjourned.